I could just use this.
Okay.
So you can take that.
Okay.
I'll bring it to you either way.
Let me know if you need to go back and you can look back.
Okay. I don't think.
[laughing]
It's noisy.
It's weird.
[inaudible]
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 It's noisy.
It's weird.
[inaudible]
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 Have a dedicated space for tutors and learners, program materials such as workbooks, dictionaries, auto-visual materials, GED test preparation packets, targeted online resources, and other items are provided to all participants free of charge. And I would also like to put forth the library hosts an early learning program for families with preschool-aged children, Thursdays at 11:00 a.m. And I thank you very much for your time and support.
Okay, our next request is from Leanne Dryberg, Inland Temporary Homes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's always a pleasure to come and speak to you every year and giving you an update of our agency. When I came to the agency 15 years ago, we were a very small agency that was barely in existence and pretty much supported by you. Fast forward 15 years, we are now serving families in our shelter programs. We have 26 scattered site units of families that get to stay there for two years while we help really change their lives around. And over the past year and a half, we've started a homeless prevention program where we have 90 families in that program. We are actually keeping them in housing and supporting them through case management and rental assistance while they get back on their feet. So, we've really tried to stretch your dollars over the year and make what little you're able to give us, stretch farther and farther every year. I appreciate you recommending us for funding again this year, and that's about all I have to say tonight. So, do you have any questions? No? Just one clarification. We asked for 25, but only 15 from the city, because the other 10 was for another city. So, thank you.
Okay, next is Pam Grogan from Boys and Girls Clubs.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to address the council and the mayor. Just want to give you an overview of our services and what we provide to the community. As many of you know, in terms of the challenges that are facing our youth today, there's a lot of statistics out there that point to the fact that the critical hours for most youth is between the hours of 3:00 and 8:00 p.m. A lot of challenges are being faced by our youth today, especially the high dropout, high school dropout rate, the crisis. And nationwide, only 69% of our students are graduating today. In terms of the Boys and Girls Club, to give you an overview, we have been providing services nationwide and to the community for over 40 years. We do more than just provide recreation programs. We provide after-school programs, a lot of sports and fitness programs, and we create wholesome activities that build self-esteem, teach responsibility and respect, and we help youth make wise choices and become model citizens. The core of our youth development programs is character and leadership development, education and career development, health and life skills, the arts, sports, fitness and recreation. The Boys and Girls Club in Redlands, we currently serve four sites. Waterman Gardens in San Bernardino, of course, our Redlands site. We also have a site in Mentone and here in Loma Linda. Our mission is to enable all young people, especially those who need us the most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, responsible citizens. Some of our most, while we have over 20-something programs that we provide to the community, some of our most popular programs include the Be Great Graduate Program, which is an education and job development program where we help teens with finding jobs. We have a Project Learn, which is a homework and tutoring program, a Junior Naturalist Program, which is environmental education, Music Makers, which is cultural arts program, Date Smart, which is a teen dating violence prevention program, and then we also have Triple Play, which is a health and fitness program. In terms of our membership profile, over 65% of our kids come from low-income minority families. 6% are five years and under, 63% are through the ages of 6 to 12, and 31% are teens 13 to 18 years old. 55% are male, 45% are female. In terms of Loma Linda, our program site, we began serving kids in this city in 2007. Last year, we served 1,096 kids, and of that number, 257 were from the city of Loma Linda. Our program site in Loma Linda is held at the Brenmar Elementary School, where we serve, on average, 110 kids daily. And basically, overall, our challenges as an agency, there's an urgent need in San Bernardino County to provide after-school care. A demand for services are growing. We must meet the needs of teens. Our community continues to grow each year. And some of the program outcomes include increased levels of community service involvement, increased levels of integrity among our youth, decreased number of time skipping school, increased academic performance, and decreased numbers of negative peer pressure. Some of our major sponsors currently is the State of California ACES funding. We also receive funding from Pacific Youth Foundation, San Manuel Ban of Mission Indians, Southern California Edison, Verizon, and Walmart Foundation. So, I just wanted to give you an overview. We do serve your community, have been doing so for about three years, and we would like for you to really consider funding our program that's really needed in the community. Thank you. Any questions?
How many people in the Loma Linda specific program, how many people are involved with that? Now, you told us 250-some students, I believe. How many supervisors do they have, and what kind of training do they have for the activities they're engaged with?
As of December 31, 2010, we serve a total of 257 kids, registered, filled out, membership applications.
257 different kids?
No, from Loma Linda.
No, but in other words, if I go twice, do I get counted twice? So, it's 257 over the course of the calendar year, or are these 257 different children?
257 different children over the course of the calendar year. Okay. And then, your next question was regarding the program staff. At each site, we have a program director, and we have what we call youth development specialists. And normally, we have about two youth development specialists and one program director at each site. And they are trained. A lot of people that we hire have been with the Boys and Girls Club for an average of three years, and when we do hire them, they do have prior experience working with at-risk kids. So, they have been professionally trained, they're qualified. We do background checks on all of our staff and volunteers. So, they are definitely qualified to deal with the populations that they're working Any other questions? And I have handouts if I can pass those out. And it's just an overview of what I've already gone over.
You mentioned that you had a little over 1,000, almost 1,100 kids last year, about 250 or 260 from Loma Linda. Where are the other kids from?
San Bernardino. We have kids registered in Highland, but a lot of times, they either come to our Redlands site or San Bernardino site. So, pretty much, it's the city of Redlands, Loma Linda, Highland, and San Bernardino.
And they all come to our facility, our Brenmar? No?
Just the kids, yeah, just the kids from Loma Linda attend the Loma Linda site.
Just the 260?
257, yes.
Okay, not the whole 1,100?
No.
Okay.
Are those, I'm sorry, question. Are those kids who attend the Brenmar, are a large percentage of them already students at Brenmar? Do you know?
Yes, yes. And that's the reason why we are at that site, because it's easier to capture the kids.
Okay. Thank you for your information.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to present? I don't have any more requests, but we don't require the forms. You can just walk up and speak your mind. I don't see anyone else, then we'll close the public hearing. And back to the council, questions or comments or motions?
I had a couple of questions. I'm looking at the staff report, and I'm also looking at the item on the agenda. And on the item on the agenda says that we have up to $26,203 approved for public service projects. And on here, we're approving $20,000. So, where's the other $6,203 going to?
Public Works project.
Okay, so we're moving that money to public?
Right, because we requested for Public Works, $118,000.
I see that, but we're only going to 111, so we're going to still be short about?
With the $6,000, we still have $111,000.
And how do we, on the Public Works project, how do we make up the difference?
RDA.
Okay. So, if we were to, well, before I start the next question, we're limited up to $26,000. We could not increase that up to 30 if we wanted to?
Not using CDBG money.
I see.
At a sort of money.
Okay. All right, I think that answers my question. The other question I had regarding the Public Works project, last year, we funded, I guess, sidewalk along Stewart, Benton and Prospect. Is that what we did?
No, we did the pavement rehabilitation.
And this year, we're doing similar things on Popular through Redlands Boulevard?
Yes, on Redlands Boulevard, it's curb gutter and sidewalk, and also pavement rehabilitation on Popular Street. And along Redlands Boulevard, it's only sidewalk.
And do you already have pre-planned, as you move forward, as to what you anticipate using the next year's CPG grant?
The plan is only at 90% complete, so.
Okay. No, I mean for the next few years, because it looks like we're getting these funds on a regular basis. Do you already have specific Public Works projects that you're anticipating using this fund?
Yes, it's part of our five-year CIP.
Yes, see. And from looking at this, looks like this year, we received approximately $20,000 less than we received last year, correct? Because it looks like last year, we had $130,282 for the street improvements and $22,990 for the public service. Okay, so it leaves that, comes out to about $153,000 versus this year was $131,000. So, it looks like $21,000 less this year, from what I'm, if my math is correct.
For last year, you wanted to add $130,282 to that $22,990.
Correct.
That was last year.
So, it looks like the CPG folks are giving us less money every year?
Yes, because this has come from HUD, from the federal. So, federal fund has been decreasing, and so therefore, the county is also decreasing their allocation.
So, it's fair to say that maybe next year, we may even get less money?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'll move staff's recommendation for funding. You know, every year, it's always a painful process. There are so many deserving parties, but we'll choose to support the two entities that we have a long-established working relationship and have done some great things for this community. I'm sure many others would as well, but the funds are limited, and I agree with staff's recommendations.
I would second that. I agree with Dr. Brower. I wish we can help more, more projects and more services. We have used expanded funds to inland temporary homes in the past and the public library. I'm supporting it not because of staff, because I just think it's actually a good, two good agencies that we should support, but I second that motion.
Question. I mean, I'm in education, so I'm a sucker for these kids that walk up to my door wanting to sell me candy and cookies. And I'm not sure that some of these kids may be some of the ones I'm buying candy that I don't need from. I'm supportive of what you're doing, and I would like to see the city be able to support you as well. It would be helpful to me if I, this is good orientation, and when I see that 63% of the kids that you're serving are six to 12 years of age, and I realize the, you know, if they're not in a program that's constructive in nature, who knows where they're going to be, what they're going to be doing. So, I do support that. I don't know any more than what you've told us today about the Boys and Girls Clubs of the inland empire. I'm assuming this is more of a national effort? Is that correct? Or is this limited to Mentone, Redlands, Loma Linda and San Bernardino?
The funding is.
I understand that, but I assume there's a larger organization that supports these projects?
Yes, we do get funding from the national, but we are on a separate 5113 agency. We operate in partnership with Boys and Girls Club, and, but the funding stays here in funding that we made for Boys and Girls Club Redlands. We're not like some other agencies that have a separate funding that they raise to national.
Okay, thank you. My final question directed to the city manager is, are there options to squeeze out $10,000? Does it mean we lose 20 feet of sidewalk in one of the other projects, or just how does that work?
Yes, right now, you can, if you want to, the additional $6,000, you can allocate it to this agency, but we have to make sure that they receive the remaining $4,000 from other city, because the county, CDBG and HUD require that they have adequate funding and at least a minimum of $10,000, because the cost of administration, the grant funding.
So, then we couldn't, we couldn't give them $6,000 from this fund and $4,000 from the RDA, or it would have to come from another CDBG granting authority?
Correct. Correct. For example, for Boys and Girls Club, they ask, they request $10,000 from, from City of Loma Linda, and $10,000 from the City of Highland.
Oh, Redland.
Redland, I'm sorry. I'm looking at this right now. Yeah, right now, what county provide to me is $10,000 from the City of Redlands and $10,000 from the City of Highland. So, the total of $20,000. So, if we gave them $6,000, we had to make sure that Highland gave them four. If not, they're not going to receive any at all.
Then what we could do is make our granting the $6,000 contingent upon receiving the additional money from Highland.
Right, the county would do that anyway.
The county would do that, okay. And why have you not applied to cities of Redlands, Mentone and San Bernardino?
Mentone.
Wow, okay, that would make sense then.
Yeah, they have, do you currently receive funding from the City of, oh, I'm sorry. We currently do receive funding from the City of Redlands CDBG. We also get funding from City of San Bernardino CDBG. So, I think your question, are you talking about just the county CDBG?
Right, because for example, the City of San Bernardino, they do their own CDBG. They don't go through the county. So, we had to make sure that it had to go through the county CDBG office, because that they're the one who managed the funding.
And what happens to this money? Is it dropped in a grand general fund, or is it designated specifically to the programs that you ran at Loma Linda?
Oh, no. This money is not for our general operations, it's for program. Yeah, it's definitely for program.
And if we grant the $6,000 and they don't come up with the other four, it comes back to us, or we lose it?
I can put it in, they gave us the form to fill out, and we can put a condition in there that if they don't get the remaining $6,000, I mean $4,000 from City Highland, then the six will go back to the city capital improvement projects. I can try that.
Okay.
Are amendments in order here, or how does that work?
Well, if we follow Robert's rules, you can offer an amendment, or it can be a friendly amendment and modify the original motion. Or they can stick to their guns and take a vote.
I would offer an amendment to the motion that in addition to the current motion, we provide $6,000 to the Boys and Girls Clubs of Loma Linda.
I would second that.
Okay.
Obviously, we would all love to provide as many funds as possible. My only concern is, in years past, it seems like we've had a fair amount of feedback that if we make things more complicated, more difficult to administer, that that's not something that is desirable. So, look to staff for your feedback on that. If you feel it's easy to follow through with splitting things up more than you originally recommended, certainly supportive if you think it's feasible, but I had to conclude from your staff report that there are reasons you didn't do that originally, and my understanding is based on some of those administrative issues, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, I want the staff and the county CDBG request, but again, I can ask, and if you get additional funding from the City of Highland, then it'll be okay. And if not, then you're not going to get the $6,000.
Okay.
Clearly, the intent of the motion isn't to harass the staff with more paperwork, so if it's going to create undue challenges, then I'd understand that as well. But I would like to at least see if we can make this work for this year only.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say, if staff feels it's definitely workable, then I would be supportive of including that on my original action.
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to do that, because my kid went to Brenmar, so I.
As a representative of Boys and Girls Club, you could probably tell us what some of the other cities have committed to, since we don't know that. Or you haven't made it there yet, or?
Well, we're just now getting the letter. In fact, I have another meeting to do a presentation with the City of San Bernardino tomorrow morning. But last year, they gave us five. We asked for 15, but they gave us five. And the City of Redlands, they gave us $10,000 last year, and we anticipate getting $10,000 this year as well, CDBG.
And if, let's say Highland ponies up $6,000, does that mean she gets 12, or they get 10?
She'd get 12.
Okay.
Do you know when you're going to be applying for the City of Highland?
City of Highland? I don't think I got that notification yet. We didn't apply last year. This will be our first year applying.
And were you planning on applying for the City of Highland?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we did this year, but we didn't last year.
But you're unsure as to timing as far as when the process is?
No.
It has to be this week or next week, because they gave us a short timeframe to submit this to the county, so.
Yeah, it sounds like it's going to be contingent on what happens in San Bernardino and Redlands. But I think what we have is we have, it's considered a friendly amendment, is adopted in the original motion and seconded, so I think we can go to a vote if there's, unless there's any other discussion. Okay. Is there any opposition to the amended motion? I don't see any, so it passes. So, you've got a $6,000 match to a $4,000 donation from someone else?
Okay.
If you can come up with it.
Okay, thank you.
It's actually $6,203.
Well, $6,000. That was the motion, $6,000.
[inaudible].
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, just one more comment. These type of programs are benefit, and maybe it'll, maybe we can say that by doing this, we'll cut down some of that graffiti we've been seeing down on Redlands Boulevard.
We're specifically requesting an anti-graffiti program.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if six and 12-year-olds are responsible for that, however.
Well, I think the 12-year-olds might be.
The handwriting is so bad, it could be six-year-olds. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move to item number three, a public hearing for the second reading on Council Bill O-2011-05 on Regulation of Registered Sex Offenders. Mr. City Attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If you recall, we have discussed this item on two previous agendas. At the last meeting, certain changes were made at the council's request, and the ordinance was reintroduced as a first reading at that time and passed. It is before you this evening on second reading and noticed as a public hearing as well. The ordinance is intended to add to our municipal code certain restrictions on registered sex offenders to prohibit their residing within 2,640 feet of any school, or from residing within 2,000 feet of any park or daycare center. And we included in the definition of park Hillside Conservation Area and Edison Easement Trail at your request. The sex offenders would also be prohibited from being personally located within 300 feet of a school or park where children are present, as set forth in the ordinance. So, there is no further change this evening. The recommendation of staff is to waive reading of Council Bill O-2011-05 in its entirety to direct the clerk to read by title only and to adopt on a roll call vote.
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing first. So, we'll take note of the language you said to us, and we will, when the time comes, reference that. Okay, we'll start with a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this issue? Okay, hearing, no comments, we'll move on. Public hearing is closed. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion that we adopt this bill and that we waive the full reading and ask the clerk to read it by title only.
I'll second that.
That was good. That's the smoothest we've done it in a long time.
I was practicing over here.
Okay, I'll see if we can find the vote, the buttons. Is there any discussion? Okay, okay. Go ahead, Pam.
The ordinance is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, Adding Chapter 9.28 to the Loma Linda Municipal Code and Entitled Regulating Registered Sex Offenders." And you may vote. It passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to item number four, joint meeting of the City Council and Redevelopment Agency. And would the Redevelopment Agency Chair please call his group to order?
We call the RDA to order.
And, Mr. Mayor, with your permission and the chairman, it would be appropriate to make our announcement as to the closed session. The Redevelopment Agency was in closed session prior to reconvening in open session, and the closed session item was listed on the Redevelopment Agency agenda as item number one. It was a real property conference with legal counsel and real property negotiator. There was no final action to report it at this time. There was no final action to report it at this time.
Okay, then we'll go back to item number four. And we have the auditing firm and the city finance director and whichever of you would like to speak, go ahead.
Mayor, council members, staff and citizens of Loma Linda, good evening. My name is Gabriel Tank. I'm the managing of the audit from the CPA firm Caprichin Lawson for in charging for this year's audit. Does it work? So actually, we prepared a PowerPoint presentation, but um some technical difficulties. If you have a handout of that. So basically, um we're going to talk about the responsibility of the CAFR and what is our auditing effort regarding on auditing this financial statements. The city is responsible for presenting all the financial data on the financial statement to adopt the sound policy for being used on the city level and have perform and do a reasonable estimate of what estimate number they're using, establish and maintain the internal control and prevent and detect fraud that happen in the cities. Our our responsibility as auditors is to obtain reasonable assurance of the financial statement and everything that discos on the CAFR, which is a financial report attached to your package. And we also evaluate all the compliance requirements that the city have such as single audit and audited compliance requirements. Our auditing effort involves we're planning and assessing the internal control of the city. We do that by conducting interview with the staff level. And then in addition to that, we do samples and testing of financial transactions such as reviewing bank reconciliation, looking at expenditure transaction for construction projects, so on and so forth. And we also validate the significant estimate numbers that have been used in the city like amortization for the use of life of capital asset and others estimate. And we also send out confirmation to confirm with attorneys and bank, bank institute to make sure the number on the financial are fairly stated. And we review the basis of the management estimate, make sure it's reasonable and is um sound. And we perform the year-to-year comparison from every year, so if there anything that jump out of line or anything that unusual happened, we'll notify the staff and investigate immediately. So the financial statements separate into different parts. At the beginning, there's auditing reports basically talking about our opinion, then goes into the basic financial statement with all the numbers and also have attached footnote disclosure behind it. And then there's also requirement requirement supplement inter uh information such as your budget and some of the purse and OPEF information are also included in the CAFR package. On the back, there's supplementary information of statistical section of the last 10 years of the financial statistic and also um geographic statistic of the City of Loma Linda. Other report that we also issue are the City of Loma Linda Audit Redevelopment Agencies, the Single Audit Report, the GAN Limit Report, and also the Communication to the City Council Letter. Our opinion. Basically, the financial statement is fairly fairly stated in all material respect. All the significant accounting policy have been considered apply and sound. Estimates are reasonable and disclosure are properly reflected on the financial statements. There's no disagreement with the management. There's no material error or irregularity that being discovered. No single audit finding, no accounting issues and no material weakness on the internal control have been identified. Also, there's no compliance issue have been identified either. And I would like to thank you for your time and allowing us to audit the City of Loma Linda. It's been a pleasure. Any questions?
Go ahead.
Refresh my memory. How many years have you been performing the audits for Loma Linda?
This is the four from 2006, seven, four or fifth year.
Since since 2006.
2006.
Six, seven, no, ten.
All right, obviously, you know, long-term planning, those issues and length of one single entity become a factor and just good to keep that in mind, obviously, not any other reason or lack of of um of faith in the performance of future activities, but certainly as any management oversight that is an issue that we will certainly be looking at in the future.
Yes, we understand that and we we do, we're not against the regular rotation of auditing staff or auditing firm. And yeah, and we agree to that. That's just the industry, how that is, so.
I would only want to comment on the fact that we met as an audit committee prior to this council for about an hour, the mayor and myself, and we reviewed most of the audit and we asked lots of questions and we were able to get further deeper into it and I'm very satisfied with it, so I I move that we receive this report.
Does it require a motion to receive it or? Okay, it does require it, so.
I'll second that motion, ma'am.
Okay, any other discussion, any questions?
Well, there's a newbie on the committee. I get to ask a few elementary questions. This is part of my learning process.
It's the newbie hour, go ahead.
The newbie, that would be, yeah, that's it. When we talk about cities' net assets, governmental versus business type, I can speculate, but can you help me understand what business-type activities constitute city net assets? I'm looking at page eight on your handout or on the screen here.
Page. I want to make sure I have all your documents. Which one is it?
You may be asking questions regarding Diane's presentation at the next item, which is actual budget.
Yes.
Mid the end of the year report. Yeah, no, they're kind of connected and I think it's confusing.
That's Diana's.
I'll be doing the presentation on the actual numbers.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, now you've got a question waiting for you.
Working out the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. Sorry for the confusion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to accept the audit report. Any further discussion? Is there any opposition to accepting the report? I hear none, therefore it's accepted. And we'll move to item number five, which is this, Diana's.
Do you want me to actually present on the CAFR report?
Uh, if you're still on item four, then go for it. And we reserve the right to reverse our acceptance if you come up with something controversial.
Dr. Y, if you guys want to move on, we can do the midyear.
I say we move on.
Do you guys care about the details?
Well, when you say I'm not.
I can answer.
That's an obscure question for me because I'm not sure what details.
Okay, then go ahead with your presentation.
Is this the handout we're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not very long and I've got a couple of questions that would be helpful.
Okay, and we'll move forward.
So don't feel like you have to extend this out, but just hit the high points would be helpful.
And just to review some of the things mentioned by Gabriel, these are our city responsibilities, the what we as management are held accountable for. And just just the, the report is broken down into three main sections, which are the introduction, the financial, which is the presentation of the financial statements, which are the government-wide financial statements, which are required by GASB 34, which basically present the city as a whole with as a business-type entity with full accrual. And then we have the fund financials, which are the standard ways of reporting for governmental entities, which is the modified accrual method of accounting. So then the notes, which are very important to read along with the financial statements. And then we have what's called the statisti- statistical section. Sorry. Can't get it out. And that kind of shows trends and just a significant data over periods of time. And we've been preparing the CAFR since 2003. So you'll see some trends there of items reported that are required for for that length of time since we've been doing CAFRs. And then we have the financial statements. We report the city and then we report the Redevelopment Agency as a separate component unit. It's incorporated into the CAFR as a whole, as a combined entity, but we also report it separately as a separate component unit. This is governmental activities, which you were alluding to. We have the governmental and we have the business-type activity. Business-type activities are enterprise funds, which are our water sewer, our Loma Linda Connected Communities Program, which operate more like a business-type entity, which we charge the users a service fee. And and supposedly, they, the user fee should maintain the operation of those funds. They should not impose upon the general city revenues. So as you can see, for the governmental activities, the net assets that we have are 62.5 million and for the business-type activities, we have 24.8 million. And here we show the the change in net assets, which kind of shows the operations. For GASB 34, what we do is we we take the program cost, we take any program revenues and apply it to it to those costs and come up with the the net cost, the cost net of program revenues. And then we apply general revenues, which are taxes, interest and other revenues that are just more of a general term. And then, as you can see, for 2010, we actually have a net change of positive 277,000. In the general fund, and this is our general fund activity, change in fund balance, which is, this is the financial present, fund balance presentation. It's the way we used to, what we call used to, prior to GASB forty, 34. So this is the modified accrual method and as you can see, we have reserves, unreserved and a total fund balance of this year, we ended with 7.8 million, which covers 62% of our expenditures. And general fund revenues, here you can see the the actual activity, our revenues, our expenditures. We have other financing sources and you can see the result of operations, which was a deficit of 205,000 dollars, basically, which was less of a deficit than we anticipated when we originally went into the budget process. And here are our business-type activities. So here we're just showing you the the net change in net assets. So overall, we have a deficit of 544,000. We are showing significant change negatives in our sewer fund, which was due to maintenance and repair costs that we incurred. So that kind of dipped into our fund balance or net assets. And then for our Loma Linda Connected Communities, because of the significant investment we made into the fund and the outstanding loans that are there, it accrues interest and depreciation on the assets, which is not, which creates this negative deficit. And this is our RDA. So as you'll see, we have restricted and unrestricted and we have a positive of 3.1 million with a negative of 21.6 million. What that negative represents is the outstanding loans and liabilities that the fund has, which there are significant loans from the city to the agency, which create this significant negative unrestricted assets. And then here you'll see the the kind of the cost of the net operations for program costs versus program revenues. And then general fund, general revenues, which basically are tax increments and any investment earnings in the RDA that contribute to the operations of the Redevelopment Agency. So you have a net change of negative 4.2 million in the RDA for 2010. And that's just quickly going through the report.
Any questions?
Couple of of simple questions. Are the variances that we're seeing typical in terms of trends over an extended period of time?
We have the.
So it's change in net assets from negative 1.3 million to 544,000. Is that within the the range that we would expect?
Well, it will vary depending on the source of funding. We had significant grant fundings prior years. So those revenue sources kind of throw, skew the whole where in the pre, in the current year, we may not have had those same sources of revenues. So that's why you'll see those the significant changes, plus the RDA depending on your source of funding, because we still have bond proceeds out there. So we'll be using bond proceeds that we received as revenues in a previous year. So
I see.
It kind of, it it varies. What we tend to try to focus on just for the general operation is the general fund. And in previous years, we have been contributing to the fund balance. This is kind of one of the years that we had to dip into fund balance, that we had been contributing to the reserves in previous years.
And last question that I have is results of operations. We went from 295 to a negative 205. Is there any reason to be concerned about a negative balance there, a swing of 400,000, almost 500,000?
We I we we've taken measures into account for to cut any deficit. We, last year, when we went into the budget process, we knew we were going to end up with a deficit just because of the cuts that were necessary to get us to that point and and then there were extraordinary, a few extraordinary items that we had some emergency generator that we needed to purchase and then we had some legal settlement costs that we needed to be. So there were a couple of extraordinary items that contributed to that deficit. So but as we go into the budget cycle, and you'll see in the midyear presentation this year, we're hoping to end with a positive fund balance.
Let let me add one thing. This is, even though, yes, last fiscal year is deficit of 205,000 dollar. This is in addition to, we did layoff of full position. We did furloughs, which equivalent to 5% reduction in salary. We also did a $50 a month benefit reduction from the staff, so.
And clearly, if we had not done those, taken those actions, the
Would be a lot worse.
deficit would have been significantly worse.
Yes, sir.
And in terms of the, I guess we'll look at the midyear for this year and get a handle on where we're at. Okay, thank you very much. As I said, I apologize for taking everyone's time, but it's helpful for for my orientation.
Okay, then we can move to item number, if there are no other questions, then we can move to item number five, Joint Meeting of the City Council and RDA about midyear budget. Mr. City Manager or Finance, take your pick.
Yes, Diana has a PowerPoint presentation that she's will present it to you.
And before you, you'll have a staff report, which includes a lot, a lot more data than I'm going to present in the PowerPoint. You have a couple of attachments at the end of that report, which will detail You have a couple of attachments at the end of that report, which will detail the changes that staff is requesting to the budget at this mid-year point. So, as I said before, the general fund is our key operating fund for most of our general services. We also present the city as a whole, which includes the general fund, our special revenue funds, which are revenue sources that we get from maybe the state government for highway users' tax, any grant funding, and special revenues of that source that are restricted in use, that we have to segregate from the general fund. And then we have our enterprise fund, which are more of our business operations, as far as our services that we provide. And then we'll have the RDA. And this presents when we adopted the budget, and then where we're at, at this, at this mid-year point. And this is our beginning fund balance. And as you can see, we have a 2.9 million, almost 3 million, in available fund balance, which has not been identified as a reserve of fund balance. We have identified for rainy day fund the 3.5 million, and then we have 1.25 in equipment replacement reserve, with, which really leaves us with a total fund balance of 7.7 million. And here we'll show the, how we started the budget, and then what, where we're projecting to end the budget in this current cycle, with the mid-year changes that are proposed. So, we started with a revised beginning balance of 2.9 million. Then we're proposing some changes to revenue sources, which gives us 4 million. And then we're adding some expenditures as well, so, which increases them to 13.9 million. And then that will leave us with 3.1 million instead of the original 2.8 million we were These are our seven top revenue sources, sales tax, our refuse service, our admin overhead, our motor vehicle license, our property taxes, our franchise fees, and the lease income. As you can see, we're not making any big changes to most of them. The ones that we did see some changes to were to our motor vehicle license, which we get through the state, so we are seeing some increases, so we are proposing an increase in that, as well as to our property tax, which for, is for our unsecured property tax that we did see an increase in the receipts for those. The bottom line will show the total general fund. We are presenting an increase to the total general fund in revenues of 261,100. And you'll see some of those increases include, we have seen increased building activity revenue, that we're proposing increasing those, but that's not part of the top seven, so we're not presenting it in here. We are proposing some increases to our emergency response, our contractual agreements for disaster coordinator that we are getting, we have a contract with the medical center, and a hazardous mitigation plan contract with the City of Colton. So, those were, are reflected in, those revenues are reflected in there. And then we are seeing some miscellaneous revenue, refunds and reimbursements, and then we did receive a donation from the San Manuel Band of Indians for some heart monitors. So, so those are all reflected in that $261,000 increase to revenues. And then for expenditures, we present them by the major categories of operations. So, we have our admin, our general government, our police services, our community development, our fire department, and public works. And you'll see some increases to general government, the 46,000, which was, basically, we have seen across the board for the city, increases to our worker comp insurance, so those increases will be reflected in all categories. In police services, we are showing a decrease. When we eliminated the red light cameras, we eliminated a sheriff's service specialist that would monitor those cameras and do the reporting for those cameras, so that's the savings in the general fund for that position. And then for community development, we are seeing an increase due to the building activity. We also have, on the flip side, contractual obligations to Willdan for their building inspections and permitting activity. So, that's an increase to them for that contractual service. And then for fire, you'll see an increase, and we have some overtime due to workers' comp and mutual aid responses. And then, because we are increasing the, the emergency medical service response billing, there is a corresponding fee that we pay to the billing company that, which is included in that increase. So, overall, we're only increasing revenues in the general fund by 120,000. So, this kind of-
Go ahead.
This, we'll just present the summary of the changes, so we're having a positive change to the general fund of 142,900.
I'd like to add-
So, is this, is that $100,000 expected to be consumed by the cleanup from the floods?
That's my, the, the positive of 142,900, it's not include the winter storm damage that we, the cost that we encounter. We, right now, we estimate the cost to be $1.3 million, of which the city are responsible for 6.25%, which is equivalent to about $48,000. So, from 142,900, you have to subtract 84. So, we see a positive, but about $58,900. So, don't go out and party yet, that's a drop in the bucket.
Which is less than one-half of 1%. So, that's pretty tight budgeting.
It's very tight. And again, we, I mean, you can't do any better than this. We, our expenditures, we are right at 51% and, at mid-year. So, because of the budget, I keep this very tight.
Hopefully, no more rainstorms.
And that's why I'm wishing that we can use some of the rainy day fund for, for the, for the cost for cleanup and so forth. But so far, we don't need it, if everything go per plan. But one thing that had to be cautioned of, 75% of the cost will come from the federal, and 75% of, 25% will come from the state. But we don't know when they're going to pay us for that, for that portion. That's why we need the reserve to carry us over for, might be the next couple of years, for them to pay us back.
Yeah, they have to, the, the bond sales to the, to the Chinese government have to go through first before they can, yeah. So, it looks like we need to do a collective pat on our, on our backs for doing well this year so far. Any questions?
I see the representative from the fire union. You know, I will be talking to them after the meeting, and, and I would like to thank you Fire Department for all this rain damage that we have. We work together between the Fire Department and Public Works. And Deborah Kriski is not here, but she, she is the one who add up all the numbers, and, and she had to fill out all the form for us to get the reimbursement back. So, there's still a lot of, a lot of work coming, so.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
Just a couple of questions and comments. Again, appreciate the conservative nature of projections and budget, and it speaks highly, as we mentioned. I can't help but note, police and fire constitute 56% of our general fund expenditures, and, you know, I think that's very appropriate, that majority of our expenditures are going for those vital public services. One question I had, you know, it's always hard to get a handle on the RDA and exactly how much debt, how we're doing exactly. Do we get any regular feedback if any of our bonds out there get rerated or changed? I guess in my mind, that's a pretty good way of at least comparing ourselves to other cities, and have we gotten any feedback on how any security firms rate our bonds that are out there?
We haven't been notified. Usually, we would be notified by the bond rating agencies if there was a downgrade in our bonds, and that would be as a result of either noncompliance, or default, or, you know, many issues, but-
Or just worsening general financial picture, which some cities have had changes in their bond ratings, I'm aware of. So, I guess my bottom line on that, I think that speaks positively to our budgeting efforts as well. The only area that, you know, to me seems like we have a big challenge still is our connected cities, connected communities area, and we highlighted the deficit that's there, and there's many reasons why it's larger than any of us would like, but I do think just, you know, and reflecting, that's probably one of our biggest challenges to, to look with directions and where to go with that.
Yes, sir. I'm glad you asked that question. Conrad and I have been working very closely to look at that numbers, and Conrad, in the past couple of months, had been talking to different companies to see the possibility of sale off part of our connected community, which is the residential part of it. You want to add on to that, Conrad?
We've met with a couple of the, a couple of our manufacturers and vendors. They're interested in buying the residential portion of that as a test fit for some of their equipment. We've talked to Verizon in the past, they've not been interested in any, any portion of that. You know, the residential portion of connected community for us is a money loser. The commercial portion is actually a positive piece for us. And then the other piece to keep in mind, as we look in the connected community cost, is we have no IT budget for the city. Our entire staffing and IT costs are buried in connected communities. So, part of that, we have to pull back out and charge back into the general fund if we want to do a true, fair analysis of what connected community costs us.
This budget was taken to the Citizens Budget Committee, and the fact that none of them were here to contest it or to complain about it tells me that they were fairly satisfied.
Yes, and as I mentioned, at the Budget Committee, we have been meeting with the Budget Committee a lot more often than we used to. We meet every three months, and lately, you know, almost every month, so. So, it's a good thing. I want to keep the public informed about our budget, because it's being so tight. I want to get them involved and keep them informed.
Okay, do we need to vote for a modified budget, or accept the report, or nothing?
If you would like to, please approve the proposed changes to the, to the budget.
What were the proposed changes?
Those, those increase for fire, decrease for?
So, you'll have the-
You saw it in the presentation.
What I saw was that we ended up with $142,000.
Yes, but because we have increasing revenue, but at the same time, we have increasing expenditures. But I need your approval to increase those expenditures.
The increase to revenues was 261,100, and the proposed increases to expenditures were 120,000. We do also have some proposed changes to other funds, but the majority of them are for grants that we have received in, in the interim, and so we're proposing the revenue and the expenditure for, for most of them. We received the Safe Route to School, we have received an energy-efficient grant, and, and then we've received the Click-It-and-Ticket and sobriety grants, and additional CDVGR grants, that we're adding the funding and the expenditures, corresponding expenditures at this time as well. There's very minimal changes to the RDA, just minimal.
Okay, do we need to appropriate any funds for the, for the net loss on the, on the flooding, or is that something that will handle at year-end?
Yes, that's had to come back, because, because that was just an estimate.
Okay.
I still have to go out to bid, which is, I'm preparing a plan right now, as the resident asks, about preparing a plan to go out to bid to remove all the debris and mud from those detention basins, so.
Unless there's any other questions, I'm comfortable with accepting this report, and we move that we follow staff recommendation of approving the requested budget changes to revenues and expenditure appropriations at mid-year.
And I'll second Counselman Pobeska's motion.
Okay, is there any further discussion? We have a motion, a second. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, then it passes. We'll move to consent calendar. Looks like the Demands Register has no conflict issues.
I will move to approve the consent calendar, although I can't help myself but make a brief comment on 13. I definitely believe we should support the alignment along the 215 if this boondoggle is built, but I think it is an absolute, will be an absolute financial disaster for the state, but that's beyond our decision-making abilities here tonight, and I will support this narrow action based on not being able to change the other parameters.
Okay. Is there a second for the consent calendar?
I was ready to second until I found out I was supporting a boondoggle.
We support lots of those.
You're supporting the optimization of what is otherwise a boondoggle.
Yeah. No, financially, there's a lot of risks, I think, ultimately. You travel very, very many parts in the world, and our, our mass transit, ground mass transit systems are so impoverished in comparison, I would hope that we can make this work, but obviously, we've got a lot of-
I've yet to see any thoughtful business analysis that even comes close to making economic sense. If someone has that, hey, I'd love to see it.
So, was that a second? Okay. Is there any other discussion? If not, then is there any opposition to the consent calendar? Hearing none, it passes. We have reports of councilmen.
I just want to make a quick report. Diana and I attended a conference last week on pensions. I'm sure many of you have seen in the news that pensions is a big issue, not necessarily for our city, but primarily for our state and country. The conference was very informative. We got a chance to do a conference call with a congressman, I think Congressman Nunez, and he's sponsoring a bill, which I think is actually going to, I'm actually going to bring over here for us to approve a resolution in support of. And basically, the bill, at the federal level, does three things. One is, it ensures that the federal government does not bail out states as they run out of money to pay for pensions. Number two, it sets up a system by which all pension participants throughout the country, there's about 25,000, 2,500 pension groups, and these are people from school districts, water districts, cities, counties, and states, contribute information about how they run their pension system, so it's public. A lot of people really don't understand the pension system, and this is a way to add transparency to it. And, and then the third component of it is to ensure that there's a grading system placed, even though it's mandatory, it's voluntary to provide information in this database. If municipalities do not provide it, they will not be guaranteed some of the bonding tactic exempt status that the government would give them to issue bonds. The conference is extremely educational, there's lots of things to further look into. Just in general, several accounting firms have determined that the State of California right now is running about a half a trillion, the most liberal estimates, of unfunded liabilities for future pension people. To give you a perspective of that, it's a huge, huge issue. Some cities are doing fine, some cities are really in trouble. Even Orange County, they have unfunded liabilities up to $300 million. We're gonna, the mayor and myself are going to look a little bit more closely at our city, specifically our pension system, to make sure that we're adequately funded, not necessarily just for this year and next year, but as we go in the future- necessarily just for this year and next year, but as we go in the future. Uh, there's a lot of estimates as to how much money we'll have available and those estimates are based on how much it's gonna cost us and a number of other items as far as how long people live and how much it contributes and things of that nature. So, we're gonna be meeting with the Calpers folks just to make sure that our city is well-funded. Once, if there's any information that we derive from that, we'll bring it up to the public and the rest of the council and if there's any steps that we must take, then we'll, you know, we'll do that at that time. But it's an ongoing process, it's probably gonna take several months to a year because it is a very complicated process in which the city contributes money for people who are actively working and even those who are actually retired, so. That's kind of a report on that item.
Any other reports? I have, uh, an update from Sandbag. Last month, we announced that we got, uh, approval of our environmental document for the Anderson Typical, Typical New Interchange. That was very good news. There's a little bit of a controversy brewing in Sandbag and that is that, uh, there's, uh, an, an action before the board for some sliver takes of eminent domain of some business properties along the corridor for the high-speed bus line, uh, called the SBX, the San Bernardino to Loma Linda line. The controversy is that there are lots of people out in the community saying that, that they don't like the fact that this high-speed line down the middle of Hospitality Lane and E Street and, and whatever other streets are affected. They don't like the fact that it requires people entering their businesses to go beyond the business, do a U-turn and then come back, eliminate some left turns into businesses. So, there's a lot of pressure on, on the members of the board, um, to vote either yes or no for this. So, there's, there's a lot of heat arising on that. And what I'm looking for is if there's any kind of a feel in, in our community about, uh, whether to go forward or not with this kind of a high, high-speed bus plan, uh, just because, you know, I'm your representative, but I'd like some input. So, if anybody has any input for me, let me know how the community feels and how I should vote. We, uh, the project is a hundred and ninety-one million dollars, uh, at least, that's the budget. It's obtained full federal funding for two-thirds of it and the local match monies are set aside for the other third. It'll probably come in significantly lower than that eventually, but the federal and the match and the state funds would go down, you know, on a pro-rata basis if, if it comes in cheaper. Now, the question that I, the, to kind of frame the controversy, there are the business people who don't like the fact that the left turns are eliminated. And then there are the fiscal conservatives who say that a hundred and ninety-one million dollars for a rapid bus line that's thirteen miles long would constitute a boondoggle. And, uh, nobody ever proposes that local transit would be a moneymaker. So, there's not even, not even an attempt to make a business, uh, model for it. So, it's essentially, if we vote no, and if we don't do the eminent domain, the project can't go forward and it's scheduled to start in September of two thousand and eleven. It's a lot of federal funds, a lot of jobs for the local community, um, and I'm just looking for discussion.
Couple of comments. One is that my understanding, I serve on Omni-Trans Board and so there's been chatter among Omni-Trans Board members because a number of them also serve on Sandbag, as you know. My understanding is that the no votes came largely from desert communities that would have, would not benefit in any way by this and that the more local votes, with some obvious exceptions, didn't vote for the eminent domain, uh, motion. And that, uh, there are others that felt that they didn't have adequate advance notice and they're hopeful that some of those votes will come their way. But there was still a vast majority. Is that correct? They just didn't meet the required two-thirds, is my understanding.
Their reading of the bylaws of Sandbag, uh, is that of the twenty-nine board members, they need two-thirds vote or twenty of the twenty-nine in order to pass an eminent domain or, or the finding of, of necessity or finding, or there are certain findings that you have to make before you can proceed with eminent domain. And the number of yes votes on the first round was sixteen, primarily because we had a fairly low quorum. So, when everyone is in attendance and all of those who, who abstained because of unknowns about conflict of interest, when you, when you do sliver takes on a hundred and fifty-one properties, the chances are that a county supervisor who receives millions of dollars of donations to their campaign funds has some kind of a conflict with somebody. So, they all abstained and failed to vote either yes or no. So, they're, they're looking at it, this is gonna be a very close vote, so I'm just looking for input.
Just a few thoughts, uh, from my perspective, uh, having seen this project develop over a number of years, I don't think it's a economic boondoggle. There's no alternative, uh, such as Southwest Airlines to fly between Southern California and Northern California, uh, to get between, um, Cal State and, um, the different entities. And Loma Linda, the bus route does tailor transportation where it needs to go. And I think, um, you know, the alternative is conventional bus routes that might actually even cost more in, in the long run due to poorer service and less, uh, ridership. And, uh, to get transportation for those that need it to our vital institutions, um, I think it's a project that, yes, it's not perfect, but, uh, I wholeheartedly, uh, think from our community standpoint, it's the best alternative we have right now and I would definitely urge support.
I had a question and Dr. Deli may be able to respond to this or you, DSD. Obviously, the proposal is that we build this high-speed bus line. Do we have any information on present ridership versus future ridership as a result of a faster bus service?
They have all of those projections and in fact, uh, I would like to recommend that we, uh, ask Milo Victoria, who's the president of Omni-Trans, to come and do a presentation on some of, where he shares some of those factoids. Uh, there's a great deal of strategic planning that's gone into this project and, um, one of the issues that I campaigned on was the fact that, uh, we have such increased congestion and we're running out of dirt to build more roads and that, uh, the, the time is here, if not at least soon coming, uh, when we really do need to be able to depend more on some mass transit. And there are other alternatives that are on the table, the light rail system and ESRI and Redlands is so, uh, supportive of that, they're willing to fund their own station and get the rails to drop employees off at their campus. So, I think mass transit is something that we, we simply have to look at and I, I would, uh, I'd reflect, uh, Councilman Brower's support for the project as well. I have been involved in planning it, but I've been quite impressed with some of the presentations and the forethought that's gone into it.
I would agree. My only concern is, um, I know many of us, uh, who live in town see buses going by and I, unlike being in some of the high denser areas, I only see two, three people on the bus. And I'm, I question whether putting in a faster bus is gonna increase ridership to such a high level. That's my first question. My other question is how many people really from the city of Loma Linda would get on the bus to go to Cal State? Or how many people really get on the bus from wherever they're coming on this particular line to actually come to the medical center or the VA? Those are the type of numbers I would like to see and how this particular bus line would significantly improve the ridership.
My, my comment is, uh, again, our current economic times, I'm beginning to see more and more articles in the, in the press, um, addressing decisions being made by redevelopment agencies and committees and organizations and, uh, things like that. And, and it, it will behoove all of us in government, especially at the local, um, level that we're at, to really watch what we do and how we spend money in the coming years because people are really paying attention now more than ever, which is good. So, you know, that's, that's the only issue I have with, with any of these, including that two fifteen rail project for a state that's beyond broke. I mean, that's not even, um, you know, I, it, or we, should we even be looking at these type of things right now? So, just, just a comment.
Yeah, every, every fiscally conservative bone in my body cries out for a no vote on this kind of a project. But in, in the current environment in Washington, there's a certain appropriation that goes to this transit fund. And this is an allocation of transit funds to our area secured by, I don't know whether it's by earmarks or just competitive, uh, projects and, and, uh, winning based on its merits. So, to me, a no vote would serve no overall fiscal purpose for the federal government because they would just spend the money somewhere else. It would not help the finances of the United States to vote no. And based on that, you know, my, my feeling is if we're gonna waste money, might as well waste it on us. Is there any other comment on that? I, I thank you for your input. It, it helps me a lot with, uh, it might also help me in talking to some of our neighbors who have voted no. And I know who they are and, um, I've been in contact with them. The reasons for voting no are quite variable. They're not predictable. Uh, some of them are based on opposition to eminent domain, some are based on pro-business, and, uh, other people have different reasons. But I predict it'll be a close vote, but will probably pass.
Now, when, when is that vote coming back in front of you?
It's coming back next Wednesday.
Oh, so we won't have time to...
No.
So, have you had a chance to get a feel for how we feel?
I got a feel just now.
Okay.
I think it was very helpful.
Because I was hoping to hear from the Omni-Trans folks, maybe it, maybe after the fact at this point, but soon, we'd like to get an update on the...
Yeah, I think we should get an update because we are a terminus for this bus line. So, I think we should get an update just based on that. But as far as impacting the Sandbag vote, it's not gonna help.
Okay. Thank you.
Real quick, I'll just, if you're, if you're really looking for our feelings on it, um, I said what I said based on economics and I, and I believe that, but you had a very good comeback to that, which I understand and it makes a lot of sense too. But I will tell you this, I am opposed to a lot of eminent domain, most eminent domain projects. Personally, I, I'm against that type of stuff. I mean, it really has to be shown that it's a really good, um, project and benefit. So, so just, you know, that's how I feel.
And, and this, there are only four properties that are complete takes and those are for, for stations and things like that. Most of these are sliver takes. There's one property that's cutting six inches off their curb, that kind of thing. And, you know, the, the estimated cost for reimbursing them is forty-five dollars. So, you know, we're looking at some very, they're, they're called sliver takes for a reason. They're, they're just places where the road's not quite wide enough and they take a little chunk from both sides.
And, and there's a big difference between that and forcing somebody out of their home, so, and I understand that.
Yeah. Now that that's done, uh, it's time for our, uh, business plug. I recently, um, ate at an Indian restaurant in Loma Linda. I highly recommend it. It's Jane's, uh, Indian, uh, Restaurant and Indian Market. It's on Redlands Boulevard, west of Anderson Street. They have a nice buffet and an evening menu, so no need to go any other town to get Indian food.
And with that in mind, we do have a number of other very good restaurants, Spanish and Mediterranean and not to mention the names specifically, but I think that we continue to, uh, try to encourage residents to eat and dine and spend their money here in Loma Linda. On a side note, many of you know I'm a big Apple fan. There's rumors that next week, they're gonna be announcing the latest iPad, which is the, you know, latest graze and a lot of folks run over to the Apple Store in Rancho Cumanga or Best Buy. Well, just wanna let you know that our bookstore here in Loma Linda will carry the latest iPad. As to how many they have in stock, that remains to be seen, but just something to keep in mind.
And you can use your iPad to watch, to watch the president of Apple stumble.
He doesn't like Steve Jobs. Okay.
Okay, are there any reports of officers? Okay, seeing none, then we're adjourned. We're on to the RDA.
Okay, uh, the RDA, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Oral reports or public participation is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to speak on any items that's on the agenda or not on the agenda. Seeing none, moving on to conflict of interest. I don't believe there are any. I, Scheduled Items, number two and three, we've already dealt with in, when we had a joint meeting between the city and the RDA. The only other item that we need to make, uh, action on is item number four, which is the minutes from February eighth. I see a motion by Dr. Rigsby. And, uh, Dr. Deli, uh, has a second. Any opposition? Hearing none, it so passes. Uh, I think we're adjourned until our next scheduled, uh, city council meeting, which is March?
Eight.
March eight. And I believe we only have one meeting in March.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.